Good evening. My name is Catherine All and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I want to welcome you all to the North Kitsap School Board District One Virtual Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that doesn't support or oppose political parties or candidates. After a careful study and consensus by our members, the League does take positions on issues and we take action on those positions at the local, state, and national level. The League is a membership organization and depends on our members to organize and run events such as this. We invite and encourage both women and men to become members and help us work on our basic belief that our form of government depends on the informed and active participation of its citizens. The candidates tonight are Rick Eckert and Michael Dueschmann. Okay, got that right now. The candidates will be given one and a half minutes to make an opening statement. After both candidates have spoken, the moderator, that's me, will ask questions that have been submitted by the public. Both candidates will have one minute to respond to each question and at the end of the forum, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. And candidates, please keep an eye on the digital timer. Both of you deserves our thanks for stepping up and running for office. Please be respectful of each other. You each deserve that. Okay, so let's get started. We will begin with opening statements. Rick, your opening statement.
Okay, well, first I want to say thank you to the League for holding this forum. I think it's important for folks to be able to hear from us because especially in a local election, it's hard to get messages out and a lot of people, for people to hear from us. So my name is Rick Eckert. I've lived in Paulsville now for a little over 12 years. I first came here with my family in 2008 with the Navy. Active duty transferred here and then when I retired, I decided to stay. I started with the school board. Well, at first I started with going to school board meetings as a parent for what most people go to school board meetings for because I was unhappy about something. And then I stuck around because I was, I was kind of unhappy about how few people went to school board meetings. And then I chose to, I chose to run four years ago because there were only one parent on the board and I thought that we needed more parent representation. I'm happy to say now four of the five of us that are on the board have, have kids in the district, which is a huge increase. So as I said, I had two kids that went through the district. One from fourth grade through 12 graduated on. Another was K through 12 and he's in the special under 20, up to 21 program now. I didn't prepare a speech tonight. I just, I'm just kind of me. I just came to answer questions. Basically, I'm pretty proud of what we've done over the last four years. I know we had a long way to go. Oh, I'm out of time. I'm sorry.
Well, I can say you could finish first.
Yeah, I'll just throw it on the end.
Okay, Michael?
Okay, I grew up in Bremerton, went through K through 12 schools there. And my family have lived here in Paulsville for over 24 years. I have seven grandchildren, five of which are in the school district and two that are currently attending. And I've never served on a school board before, so this is a new experience for me. But I did serve as a firefighter paramedic for over 29 years. And although that's a paid occupation, I do view it as actually some kind of community service because it's a difficult and challenging job doing an important thing. I did go to law school and passed the bar when I was in the fire department and subsequently practiced for over 25 years as an attorney and represented firefighters all across the state and actually including the Central Kitsap firefighters for over 20 years. So 2018, I fully retired. And after doing so, I thought, you know, I'd like to be a volunteer in my community. And I was looking to do that when all of a sudden a group of parents contacted me and asked me to run for school board, which I hadn't really considered, but they shared with me some of their questions and concerns. And so after discussing it with my wife, I decided to run. And although this is a new endeavor for me, I think I can do a good job and I'll be a fresh voice on the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll start with questions now. And since Rick got to go first with opening statement, Michael, you'll go first with the first question. We'll go back and forth between you. So Michael, what are the school board's official roles and responsibilities?
Well, a school board is a, it's a government agency that is primary task is doing things for, to achieve the education of their students. And so there are really two major functions in my view of a school board. One is budgeting and there's a lot related to that. The other really is ensuring compliance with federal and state laws. So there's a whole range of, of course, things that school boards do, like budgeting, the expenses, salaries, students' curriculum, billing, facilities, all those things are in the budget and so on, upgrades, et cetera. So as far as following federal state laws, there's SHB 1541 requires cultural competency training. It includes multicultural education, English language teaching, and best practices for history and curriculum. So that's what I think about how school boards function.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Yeah, so the school board has two main functions. We provide strategic direction to the district, to the superintendent. The superintendent is the board's only employee. Everyone else in the district works for her. So we, she has this fun position of having five bosses. We all equally have a voice as her boss. And then we set the budget, as Michael was saying. So it's, it's a combination of those two roles, you know, and, and they mix all the way through because setting the budget is linked and tied to the strategic vision of the district. And without careful stewardship of the taxpayers' money, you know, the vision, the vision, the vision can't happen. So we have to, we have to mirror those two along with making sure that we're following all applicable state and federal law. But we don't delve too deeply into the actual running of the district. That's the superintendent's job.
Okay. All right, so Rick, you get to go first on this one. What is the greatest challenge facing the school district in the next year or so?
So right now, I would say it's, it's COVID. Both in what our students went through last year with remote learning. So we have to figure out, you know, not everybody did so well in remote learning. Some kids did great. Remote learning was great for them. So, but others, you know, we have to figure out how they did last year, where they stand now, and what we need to do to bring them up to speed, as well as there's a whole new year of learning that has to happen. So the biggest thing is that, is that challenge and balancing those two things as well as keeping everyone safe while they're doing it. So, you know, we have to keep all the students, the staff, and then the community at large safe while the kids are coming to school, engaging in, you know, after school activities and everything like that. So overall, it's COVID and then, you know, all the many things that go into dealing with the fact that we're still in a pandemic. And there's going to be consequences for years from the year, the remote learning, the 15 months that we have to deal with that.
Okay, thank you. Michael, your thoughts on the greatest challenge facing the school district?
Well, I agree with Rick. I think it's pretty obvious that COVID issues are definitely the biggest challenge. You know, there's changing science, there's changing data. There's lots of responsibilities and changing needs that are imposed on the district. And there are limited resources to meet that requirement. So last year, there was online learning and I know that the teachers made huge commitments to online learning. My grandkids experienced it and they did well because of the dedication of their teachers. But it was a big challenge, I'm sure, for the teachers and it also the challenge for parents and like the grand, my students, the students and my grandkids. So I think that that's a big challenge. If we have to go to, we're, we're at school full time right now and what to do when kids are quarantined is a real problem. Teachers, I'm not sure what they're going to do. It's going to be definitely a test.
Okay. All right. And Michael, you go first with this one. Should the district involve parents and teachers when making decisions that affect them, such as moving the options program and ending the Agate program? Have they done this?
Well, as far as parent and student involvement, that's, those are really my highest priorities, in particular students. So you talk about the options program and things like that. It's critical that we not just meet the needs of the students and in the parents' interest, but that we do so in a way that they understand, appreciate, and have their questions answered. So when it comes to issues like that, I think it's important that parents have questions answered. So for example, when things are considered, like the options program, those, what's, what's ultimately decided is not the only thing that should be presented to the public. There should be an effort to create a list of things that were considered but not adopted. So the parents will know why things were done and on what basis. And so I think that's the thing for the parents. As far as students go, I think that we could do better on our student representation on the board and I would really seek to advocate for that.
Okay, Rick?
Yes, I'm, I very much want community involvement, student involvement, parent involvement. I'm often disappointed that back when we were in person meetings, looking out on the room in the meeting and there only being one or two people there, it's very disheartening to talk to an empty room when we have our meetings. Things like the Agate and the options decisions, they're tough because a lot of times, and Catherine, you know, from your experience, you know, there's hard decisions where there's no good decision. There's only the best of a bad decision. And sometimes you're balancing between what seems like a disingenuous conversation where parents are going to give you their opinion and then if you don't take it, you're not listening. So it's hard and I've had that conversation with the superintendent that maybe we need to have more of the hard conversations in public. But the, you know, where the public understands what we're doing, but then we open ourselves to that criticism, not listening. So it's tough. That's a tough one.
Okay. Okay, and Rick, you get to go first with this one. Do you think our schools are doing a good job of preparing students to live in a diverse community and to get along with people from many different racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds? Would hiring a more diverse staff help?
Well, I hit the last part first. I think it would. It's just tricky in this area. I know we, I know that's an effort that we've engaged in, but finding that staff is tough. It's also one that if you actually look at our demographics, I think that the staff that people want, often ask us, you know, we should hire, aren't, aren't matching to the demographics of our actual students. So that's one of the, that's interesting and we've looked at it a few times. I do think our schools are doing a good job in that because honestly, I think our kids are way ahead of us, of our generation. I think our kids are already there. They do a great job. And my son was involved in ASB last year. You know, those, those kids are, I mean, they're way ahead of us. And I think in some cases, the adults are trailing a little bit behind. But we're doing a lot of work. We've engaged, you know, engaging with the tribes, working within, integrating the since time memorial curriculum better, more clubs, more equity type situations.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Did you read the question? I don't remember it.
Sure. Says, "Do you think our schools are doing a good job of preparing students to live in a diverse community and to get along with people from many different racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds?" And then the second part of the question is, "Would hiring a more diverse staff help?"
Okay, I think we are doing a good job. I talked with the superintendent after I decided to run and she explained to me the areas the district is doing things. And so I think we're doing a good job. I don't, I think you can always do better in this area because it's, students of color in particular are oftentimes facing difficult interactions. And so an equity program and training is critical. And I think we could do more. But as far as teachers and staff go, I do think that it's critical to have as much diversity in your school and your staff as possible. Of course, you do have issues to deal with, with seniority, employment requirements, and of course, the association that we dealt with. So you have to work with the association to implement more diverse staff and community, but we really should have it. I believe that for sure.
Okay. Okay, Michael, you get to go first with this. Are you aware of students at Kingston High School walking out in protest of their reporting of sexual assaults on their campus not being acknowledged? Students at Choice Academy and North Kitsap High School have joined the Kingston students in school day walkouts and public protests in Paulsville and Kingston. How do you think this should be handled? And the second part of that is, should the superintendent and principal sit down with the students?
Okay, I'm aware of the Kingston protest. As I understand it, it wasn't, it was, this taking place over about a week. I think there were mostly 45 students and they had like five events over a two-week period. I do think that it's a major issue and I think that if you don't have consequences for an abuser, that person will learn that it's okay to get away with it. So when there are abusers, that they need to be held to account. There are things you can do. In serious cases, they can be expelled from school. And I do think that they should, they should learn a lesson out of it and face some consequences. As far as student protests go, I've, I've watched some of them and it seems to me one of their big focuses is the emotional needs of students who are victimized by abusers. And there's a lot of need for that. I think there's a lot of students that are involved that don't speak up and I think they should speak up more. It's a good thing.
Okay, Rick?
Yes, I'm aware, I'm aware of the protests and the walkouts. The way, the way that we handle it is, you know, we don't endorse any walkouts during school, but we do take every measure to make sure that they're done safely. As far as, as far as this topic of what they're walking out on, the district follows every applicable state, local, or federal law as far as reporting and enforcing sexual assault and sexual harassment. Beyond that, you know, we have to recognize that there are minors involved in this conversation and that there are certain things that we cannot discuss. You know, there are, there are situations that we, we may have information on that we just can't, can't talk about. And so I fully support every student. I'm fully, you know, sexual assault is wrong. And if it happens, I fully support all of our students coming forward and seeking the help they need and I want them to get the help they need.
Okay. Okay, that's that one. Okay. Rick, you go first on this one. Do you agree with Senate Bill 5044 that requires school board directors, administrators, and educators to receive training on cultural competency, diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism?
I don't have problems receiving training. You know, our staff needs, receives training. I'm a big proponent that every one of our students needs, has needs. They're all unique. They're all individual. And that all of our staff needs to have all the training and tools available to receive, to be able to help every kid, teach them, guide them, support them. And so for the board to receive training similar to that is a good thing. I haven't seen any kind of content or curriculum that to come from that bill. I don't know that it's developed yet. I know WASD is working on something. So it's hard to say if I agree with the training when I don't know what the training is going to actually include. I will say that the training that I have received from WASD in the past, it's mostly been financial training, has been good. It's been factually based. So I trust that the professionals at WASD will produce something that'll be good and fair and unbiased.
Okay, Michael?
Well, as I understand it, some of the core things involved in that bill is that it requires cultural competency, I believe, and training for administrative staff and board directors. And I couldn't, I wholly support that because frankly, you can never really have too much training on this subject. And as, as leaders of the school district, it's important that you appreciate what's going on, make decisions that take into account the cultural needs and the equity needs of your school district. I also understand that it requires a professional development curriculum. So as I believe as teachers are being certified, then they'll have to also be involved in some of this equity training and diversity training and so forth. So it's being, that's the two main things I understand is being cast widely. And I think it's an awesome thing and we should do as much as possible.
Okay. Okay, and Michael, you get to go first with this one. Do you think the role of all ethnic and gender groups should be taught in US history class? And do you know if the district is working on the curriculum to include factual and complete history?
Well, history about communities of color and people of color in our country is a very important issue. I think that at least historically, we have not done a good job training students and teaching them about our history, both the good and the bad. And there's a lot of good. And you know, when it comes to communities of color, there has been some really bad things. And so I do think we need to teach accurate history, balanced, and that includes teaching students about, for example, the Native, how Native Americans were treated in our country. It includes teaching about things, for example, that are uncomfortable, like what we did with boarding schools to Native Americans. What we, for example, I never heard of the Black Wall Street massacre before and I learned that in school. We should teach that kind of stuff so our students get an accurate, full appreciation of what all citizens have experienced throughout the history of our country.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Yeah, I support, we should teach our entire history, the good, the bad, and the ugly. If we don't teach what we did right, then we can't be, you know, how do we be proud of it and repeat it? If we don't teach what we did wrong, then how do we know not to repeat it? And then how do we learn, you know, learn from those mistakes and do better? I don't know that we're developing a new curriculum, so to speak, right now. We did adopt a new curriculum for history a couple of years ago and usually that cycle is, is longer than that. It's about five years. Although the history curriculum that we did adopt a couple of years ago is pretty good and it's better than what we had. The big problem that I see is that there's just not enough time to teach all US history. Their one year is not enough. No matter what we do, if we only have one year of US history, we'll never teach it all. It's just not to a level that's sufficient. So if we're going to teach all US history to a level that's right and sufficient and complex enough, we need to have history as a multi-year course.
Okay. All right. Okay, and Rick, you need, you get to go first on this one. It said, "Board meetings are no longer recorded and posted to the district website." Do you feel that recording and posting meetings is something that should be done? Why or why not?
Yeah, it is our policy. One of the problems we've had since going to COVID is that the requirements from the state have been ever-changing. As far as what we need to do, what we can do, I personally, I would, I would prefer to be back in person right now. I wish this forum was in person right now. I'm, I'm, I'm done with the remote. But unfortunately, there's, there's three sets of rules that govern board meetings right now. The Governor's Open Man Proclamation, Department of Labor, and the Department of Health. And they overlap and they conflict. So for example, if we were to have a meeting in person, we have to offer a virtual component as well as in person and our policy says record it. We don't have the technology to do all that right now. So I really would like to get us back in person, go back to recording, posting everything. But unfortunately, our technology folks, they have been focused on getting school back in place. So I would like to get it all back in person and just go back to doing it that way.
Okay. Michael?
When I was running, I decided to run for this position. I had to teach myself and learn about a lot of, all the things that have been going on with the board for really a lot of years. So I did look at many videos, board meetings, and learn the issues. But when it came to try and understand what's the current issue and that are being addressed by the board, there were no recorded Zoom meetings. And I was really not happy about that and disappointed. So I do think that we could find ways to record Zoom meetings. I know that I talked with the superintendent and she feels like there are some limitations there, but I think we should try much harder to find a way to record Zoom meetings because it is the only way we can really keep the public informed. Not everybody can make every exact meeting. They don't, aren't always available. They were, so on. So recording Zoom meetings, you know, as long as we have them, I think is a, should be a high priority because people like me try to find out what's been going on and it's a very difficult thing. You can't really do it.
Okay. And just so you know, this Zoom meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the League's website. And I'll give more information about that later. So it can be done. Okay, now this is kind of a hard one. And Michael, you get to go first. The twice-a-month public board meetings are usually about one hour long, sometimes as short as 35 minutes. And rarely do board members ask questions or discuss pros and cons on issues. Have the details been discussed offline and does this meet the Open Public Meetings Act? Do you feel this is the best way for the Board of Directors to conduct the public meeting? If not, what is a better way? And what is your opinion for the best way for the public to get information, if not at these public meetings?
Well, to be honest, I don't think they've taken, had enough, dedicated enough time for school board meetings, especially the ones I've watched recently. Because it's, it's challenging to really deliver a lot of information that's necessary in just that shorter period of time. So my idea, and I mentioned earlier, is that so people who have questions and want to know things, they should, they should have their questions and concern answers. And really understand why the board accepted or didn't accept or adopt, that didn't adopt things that people are interested in. And so it seems to me like the issues get presented, the board with very little discussion makes decisions and the pros and cons, the things that were considered, questions had. You know, in my view, we could do a better job of providing that kind of feedback publicly.
Okay. Rick?
Yeah, well, so the questions from the public aren't generally, that's not part of the board meeting. And that, so if there's questions about our decisions during the meeting, that isn't really part of the meeting as far as I'm answering, I think, as the question's going. that isn't really part of the meeting as far as, as I'm answering, I think as the question's going. As far as our questions of the superintendent, part of the reason our meetings have been so short for the last, for a while is that we've given the superintendent direction and she's executing that direction. The district is operating the way we have asked the district to operate. So the packets that we get are complete. They contain the information that we need. And so we don't, we haven't had to ask a lot of questions. The staff has gotten very good at anticipating our questions and provides us all the information in the board packets, which our public are released to the public the same time they're released to us. And, and so we don't have questions. Occasionally, you'll, you'll hear me ask a question at a board meeting. I'm asking for the public. Because I know the answer, but I want folks to hear the answer out loud.
Okay, good. Well, we're coming down on the questions. Okay, Rick, you get to go first on this one. What is your communication style with your constituents? For instance, email, phone calls, community meetings, what?
Well, and I'll, and I'll go back to the previous question with this too. Folks are always welcome to reach out and ask their questions outside the meetings, you know, to us. That's when we can answer. Not in the meetings themselves. Folks can call me, they can email me. I've tried to have go out and meet with folks in the public, set times to meet with, with people, make myself available, and generally people don't show up. They don't come. So what I do is, you know, I, I go to, I go to sporting events, I, I go to band concert, to choir concerts. You know, I, I just try to, I go out to where the, our community is, to where our parents are and try to talk to folks. I'm not a big, I'm not a door knocker. I don't, I'm not going to bother people in their homes and norm, you know, during their off time. But I just try to talk to folks. But I said, I'll always take calls, I'll always take email. We have had a board policy that if you email the whole board, the president will respond. So, so it's a coherent message. But other than that, I'll always take folks' calls and email.
Okay, Michael?
I think we can do a lot more to get constituents involved. And as far as I'm concerned, probably email is the best way to communicate. I'm certainly, I'd be willing to meet with people and not talk on the phone. I'm very much available to do that. But I think one of the reasons why it's one of, we, we lack a lot of constituent involvement is because and I've heard this from a lot of people, that a lot of their emails go unanswered. And so I know the staff is busy, they got a lot of things to do, but I have heard many different cases where emails were sent and even to board members, and I don't know what's going on there, but a lot of them weren't answered. And so that discourages a lot of people, and I think we could do a better job. So I understand that, you know, people only come and complain at school board meetings when they're angry about something. And we, but we really should push to have more involvement, find ways to get our constituents, constituents involved in communicating with us in those ways.
Okay. Boy, I'm going to do this. I did this, it's a city council meeting too, but I'm going to throw in a a question. I don't know if either one of you are knowledgeable about the Pauls Bow looking to put a new community center. It's called the Pauls Bow Event Recreation Center, PERC. In the Walmart area. But one of the things they're discussing is a swimming pool. And I wondered how each of you feel about that considering we have our, the district has its own pool. And so I'm going to that, this would be Michael first, I guess, yeah.
Well, I, I've read a fair bit about this recreation center and discussion about the pool. And if I had, if, if I had my way, we would have a, a large community pool and not just the district pool. For two reasons. One, the district pool is aging. It needs a lot of maintenance, repair. And it costs a lot to do those things, and it's sort of like having an old house trying to repair everything. You, every time you uncover something, you find something else. So I feel like a lot of district resources are being spent on the pool up by North Kisep High School. And it would be really a relief for the school district to get to somehow get rid of that cost and responsibility and possibly getting a, a community school, a community pool would allow us to do that. So I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay, Rick?
Yeah, I've been, I'm the city, the liaison to the city, so I've been following the, the perk pretty closely. And in the beginning, they talked a lot where it would be similar, it'd be a lap style pool, like what we have. The community, the district and community pool. But recently, they seem like they're angling more towards a community pool that wouldn't really be direct competition with what we have. And I think that's probably a good, that's probably the best way to go. Our pool is generally used for lap swimming, swimming lessons, exercise classes. And they're looking at more of something that would be a, a community, a family environment play type pool. Michael's right, the, the, the pool, it, it is a resource heavy commitment for the district. You know, in the beginning, when they talked about the perk, I was really hoping they would do something that would replace our pool as far as the need to spend some money, but there was no way that was going to happen. But I, I think having a community pool would be great because having the only pool in Pauls Bow is, it, it's tough on the district. And being able to have some place for kids to just go and play would be great, especially in the hot summers.
Okay. This is the final question. Is the, is the budget easy to understand and do you agree with it? And so, Rick, I guess you go first here.
Easy to understand? Absolutely not. It's taken me four years to where I finally feel like I think I really have a handle on it. And that's with multiple training sessions from WASDA and a lot of hours spent looking at it. I used to joke, it, it's comprised of chicken bones and crystal balls. It, it, it is not. I mean, you're operating on three different fiscal years, three different calendars. Money's coming in from three different sources or multiple different sources. School finances is amazingly complicated. Now, as far as it right, I'm not sure what they mean by that. If they think, is the amount right? The prototypical model the state uses to fund us? No, it's not right. Anyone that's heard me talk about this has heard me say it a million times. The fact that we as a district of fifty five hundred students and eleven campuses are only funded for one nurse is despicable. So, no, it's not right.
Okay, Michael?
Well, I haven't had obviously direct involvement in making a lot of these decisions and interacting with some of these things, but I did talk to, at length with the superintendent, trying to understand, you know, funding challenges. And which is what Rick just kind of mentioned. So there's, everybody agrees that the state funding is not adequate for student, adequate to meet needs. So that, we really have to find ways to improve in that area. There's also funding limitations when it comes to how we have raised money through property taxes. So for example, federal, federal properties don't pay taxes. In our district, the property values are lower than the last surrounding districts. And it's, it's, it's hard to pass a capital bond because you need sixty percent. So as far as funding go, like Rick said, I think we can do so much better, and we need to really lobby the legislature to improve what is, what has been around for a very long time and needs to be redone.
Okay. Okay, that's the questions, guys, and I think we've covered a good bit of territory in them. And so we're down to closing statement time. And Ricky went first with your, with the opening, and so Michael, you get to go first with the closing statement.
I'm happy to, but I think I went first on the opening, I think, but I'm happy to go. Well, I'm seeking to represent North Kisep School District constituents, students and parents. And I'm fully committed to both supporting what has been going on and trying to improve it. The reason I'm running is I think we could use a fresh voice on the board. And I think I could do that. And I, I think with my experience that I described earlier, I'm well equipped and capable of immersing myself in complex subjects, data issues and statistics and budget matters that face the school district. So I definitely have to obviously bring myself to speed, but I think I'm really capable of doing that. I also feel like that I have a, a unique voice based upon in my life experience. And I'd like to offer that to the community, to the school district. I have grandsons, as I mentioned, in, in the school earlier, and I'm I have a, I have an investment in the school district. And I want to support it. I think public education is the most important thing that we do in our community, our kids. So I'd like the opportunity to be on the school board. Thank you.
Okay. And Rick?
Yes, so first I want to say thank you for having this. Thank you, Michael, for coming. And thank you for the folks that submitted questions and are watching. As I said, I really do value community input and folks come and, and participation. I really do wish we had, had some more. As I said, I always like to hear from folks. As I said, I started to say at the beginning, I am really proud of, of how far we've come in the last four years. I think we, we've made significant progress in a lot of the areas that folks were mad about when I came on the board. Areas like communication and transparency and relations with the staff, relations with the tribes. And I, and I want to continue with that. I, I do think, as I just said, school finance is a difficult, really difficult area. I do feel like I found, I have a handle on it, and I, continuing forward, I would, I would just be in a position to do better with that. Advocate with our, with our legislature, our local officials and the state legislature to do more with the prototypical model and financing, more for counselors and mental health professionals, school safety. So I know as the incumbent, there's a, there's a habit or a tendency to see the and the only one running with an opponent as me as the board. I am not the board, I'm just Rick. So in the end, I, I say, if you think that Rick has done a good job, please vote for Rick. If you don't think that Rick has done a good job, then I think you should vote for Michael. But in the end, please vote, because voting is important.
Okay. And I just want to throw out this too. It, it is such a deep-seated belief of mine is local elections count the most. Where else can you go and speak other than school boards, city councils, county commissioners? And what affects you the most in your life? And it's these local governmental bodies. And so I just, I'm a preacher of that, please. And, and we have such poor turnout usually in local elections, and that's a shame because this is where we have the most impact. And I want to thank well, I want to thank the Kitsap Regional Library for publicizing our forums. And BCAT for recording this forum for broadcast on cable channel three or twelve. And the League has also recorded this, and it will be on our website in a few days. And our website is LWV-kitsap.org. So tell any, any people that you know that couldn't make it tonight for the forum that they can go to our website and watch the forum. And I just want to thank you all, both of you again, for running for, for office. Not a, not enough people do this. And so I'm, I'm always, I've done a lot of, for years, done moderated forums on local and state elections. And it makes me so proud to be a resident of this area. Because we always have good qualified candidates. They are respectful of each other. It just, it just makes me proud. And so with that, I will end the forum. Good luck to you both.
Thank you.